So you believe. The.
Thanks, everybody. Uh, just for the record, Chuck Euler is not here today. He's been accused by. Bob, of course, has taken over for him as the vice. So point of record. Um, we'll go down the schedule as as it's printed, actually. Uh, first of all, though, we'll go through a privilege of the floor. If anybody would like to talk about anything that's not on the schedule. We'll open that up for privilege of the floor if anybody. I see none. So the first uh, application up is fifty-three hundred black point. I see our applicants are here.
How you guys doing?
Good. How are you guys doing?
Good. I'm Zach again. It's my brother Cody and sister Lexi. Um, last time we had to update some of what was it? The statement of operations.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, discussion. For the driveway, I think uh, Eric was at the driveway. And the garbage disposable.
Yeah.
But he updated that and then. Uh, we decided to to go through zinc septic. So um, Barry, so he sent me the insurances over and I just had them. Uploaded before the meeting today. I think it was comp liability and disability disability. So I'm pretty sure that's all you guys need. I'm not sure if you need anything else, but I can get that to.
Septic. Yeah, and for the record, your permit wise issue for the septic.
Okay.
Everybody um. And I reviewed it myself today of your parking locations are identified on your map.
Yeah.
Um. As stated by MRV, what what to do there. Um. Your statement of operations, I went through that also personally and it looks uh, pretty good. You're going for fifteen to sixteen people, six parking spots.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Um, your. Just close it.
The garbage will go behind the garage, I'd say.
And you'll be taking care of that or you're managing property.
You'll be. Yep.
Um, all the parking is gonna be on the gravel driveway, not on grass.
Yeah, no grass. Yep, that's all on gravel.
Yep.
With enough to get by and.
Pretty sure that's all you guys said, but I've. And if you guys need anything else, we can take care of that, too.
That's all my notes were to confirm basically your your fifteen to sixteen.
Yep.
Uh, six parking.
Yeah.
Um. Your your hours.
Do you yeah, I was gonna add.
Six parking, they got eight spots.
About just in case. I don't know. I figured figured the more of them, the better. So.
Yeah, we're gonna.
I can delete it if you want.
Oh, that's fine. We require the six and then.
Okay.
As long as it's still on the ground.
Yeah.
I was out there a couple times. Could see that.
Yeah.
Um.
Two and five.
Okay. Um.
Um, sorry, Bob.
No.
With the, do we need the quiet hours listed in this statement?
I think.
Operations.
On a condition.
Or did I? Um. Missed that in the statement of operations.
You're right.
I mean, is it like ten, ten o'clock?
I think actually you wrote it in the end where in that condition.
Yeah, I guess one of the conditions is ten, you have the AK.
Most of them have that done, but that's easy enough. I can.
So what we're probably gonna do is add a condition to your resolution that says that we're uh, this is conditional based on. Approval of your statement of operations that we're gonna, you're gonna follow that basically.
Okay.
Cause that has your parking and has your limitations of people. Uh, so basically it's how you're gonna operate.
Hmm.
Uh, so so that's uh. Just gonna hold you to that basically.
Yep.
Anything else, Dan?
Nope.
Uh, let's see. You understand that we're not gonna, you're not gonna, it's conditional based on the completion of the septic.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
That's in there, right?
Never listen to him. Thanks.
Barry had to order the aerobic. Thanks. I think that takes up to two weeks and then he said he should be able to get us in relatively quick. So we'll just. Let you guys know, I guess, right?
Uh, we'll let let.
Just work with the phone.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
I mean. That's all I had. Anything else? Anybody else? A question?
No. Uh, do we ask this when it's completed? Do we come back in here and speak with you guys again or?
For enforcement, right? Cool.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Easy enough.
Yeah, so that's, we're good, right?
Good.
So um.
Eric didn't include the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Two twenty dash thirty-five items in uh, the condition and the uh, resolution, excuse me. That's been covered.
Yep.
Is that the? It's stuff I talked about last week that you had to comply, that you had to update. It looks like you did update them.
Okay. And you'll get a copy of all of it. There's nothing that hasn't been done. So as a standard also, we approve these when it's approved for a year only.
Mm-hmm.
And that's kind of your guide, your. Break period. Make sure you're gonna run it right. If not, uh, you don't have any problems, then you'll come back and then redo.
Long term.
Um, there's no one year term leasing the conditions unless it's.
Yes, we stated.
Yep, stated.
Number one.
Shall remain an effective current owner.
Oh, sorry.
Year. Awesome. So we'll just be given a date and then we just do we schedule to get.
Yeah, come back. Yeah, well, I mean, you don't have any complaints or anything like that or massive complaints or any stuff that. Um.
Don't let it expire.
Yeah.
Right, so get ahead of it.
Yeah.
So it works.
About that.
It'll shut you, it'll shut you down until you reinstated. So try not to. So we can even come a few weeks before.
Oh, I would say.
Yeah.
They're sold.
Okay, cool.
Start to process it on ten.
The board will take, you know, keep complaints from happening and uh, or keep bounded complaints from happening. So then the board will take that and consider your patient following.
And the other thing we're taking, there's consideration also is if you have a complaint and how you take care of that complaint.
Yep.
You know, things like that, how you're managing that.
No problem.
All good.
Thank you.
Uh.
Wait.
Yeah.
You gotta, you gotta do it.
Oh.
Well, it'll go to leave.
No, you can stay for a minute. I would just just.
That's what I was.
We have to close a public meeting finally. Actually, I'd like to. So this will. So the meeting is closed. You guys sit down. That's cool. We're just gonna discuss any further, if anything more to discuss. So I agree to seek her.
Gonna bundle it.
We can bundle that.
I'll make the motion for the bundled seeker and uh. Special use permit resolution for CPN twenty-five dash zero one three, the special use permit has thirteen conditions.
I would for added one that the statement of operations be revised to the final.
Oh, okay. I didn't know. Can I just combine that into eleven?
That's into your your conditions right now.
I I know that it's in the condition. I was just saying, statement of operations.
Okay. So it also should.
Do it separate, so that I think that's easier for track occurrences.
Well, if you have it just stated of add it, but then also state. I wanna make sure that they follow that those in its operations. So the condition would be that. Uh, it's conditional based on the approval of the. With the addition of climate.
So we have the one that says that we shall operate according to the statement of operations that then the additional one that's gonna be some bonds, which is twelve.
I'm bad. I missed that.
Okay.
We're even then.
So we're still gonna be with fourteen conditions.
Yes, with fourteen.
Motion on a day.
Second. All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi. Best.
Now you're good.
Now we're.
See you next year.
Finished.
Yes.
We'll see you next year.
Thank you.
Have fun with the.
Thank you.
That'll go.
Celebration days.
Okay, next one now. CPN um. Twenty-five dash zero six three, a new additional amended single stage site plan for Cooley Road.
Hi, good evening. I'm uh, Dan Hackett, the landscape architect, working on the project.
I'm Carrie, your program engineer.
Apologies, hadn't been to the prior meetings, but uh, came to this one. Would you mind putting the landscape plan on?
Yeah.
And uh. What we can do is talk about that a little bit. But it's up now. So the idea here for the property, um, it's a pretty modern style home. And really what they're looking to do is naturalized landscape, naturalizing landscape. There's gonna be. Basically a first cut grass and a first cut grass would be like a grow low fescue that'll grow eight to ten inches long. They could cut that a few times a season, but it's to keep low. And then the secondary, so what we're calling the second cut. Is gonna be um, a mix of native northeast wildflowers, they call it, but wildflowers are, you know, inclusive of. Things like golden rods, exact golden rod, Queen Anne's lace. Queen Anne's lace is not a native, but it is in the mix and it's pretty prevalent in this area. So it's part of that. Um, around the house, what they wanted to do was they're they're calling these berms, but they're more like very soft rolling. Hills and almost more drumlin like. So if you're driving through where there are drumlins in the area, it has a strumlin kind of feel. And along those um, berms, as they're calling them, they're gonna import the soil and uh, then do basically. Predominantly a native planting. And that native planting is to simulate hedgerows. So there's gonna be fray uh. Stagorn chumac, excuse me, um, elderberry. There is some forsythia, um. And could you scroll to my plant list? I and I apologize. I can't read. I do so many of these. I can't remember all the plants, but I want to read through them. Eastern red bud, um, the uh, cedar trees, so native cedars, um, staghorn chumac, I said, elderberry. Uh, shadlo service berry. There is some blue spruce. Blue spruce is not a native, but there will be some evergreens. And that's obviously where the berm is flattened out a little bit more in the front. And that's to mitigate sound along the road, um, and also help encapsulate. The plan that was approved to date has the walkway coming down, the swell in between the buildings and coming out. I think when Bill was here, they talked about the uh, in-ground pump. For the spa and they also talked about the garage. On the garage, the only thing that is different. Which I didn't realize, the garage was not designed for eighty pounds a square foot. And at eighty pounds a square foot, we were going to look at using like prairie drop seed on top of the roof. Because that is already predetermined at a thirty pound weight load, that's gonna be sedums and sedums are low growing succulents. They dry. They grow in very dry conditions. Um, sedum is not a native plant. But it is a typical roof plant that's used quite often because it lowers those weight loads. So. That is not spec on my plan because I was not the architect who designed the roof loads, but I was told that this week when I told him what the requirements would be. To hit uh, the eighty pounds and they said, no, this is where we're at. So other than that. I know you guys have looked at this a few times. I don't wanna talk too too long on it. You can see the way the berming comes up. We're getting the massing, showing a person standing here. And really, the idea isn't sort of these, you know, pyramidal berms. It's these. They flatten out at the top. They come up off the property. Both sides of the property be swelled to contain all the runoff and keep it onto the property. And allow it just to infiltrate into the fields. Um. I guess other than that, I'd just like to open it up to any questions you have.
You say garage. I thought it was a carport.
Carport, excuse me.
Okay.
Bad terminology. Okay.
Uh, you talked a little bit more about how those swales are gonna keep it off the other properties.
Okay.
The north and south side.
Yeah, so again, as you see, with the with the height of the berm coming down, here's the swell, the swell, as you go to zeros, the swell is dug in. The swales are shown on both property lines coming down. So that watershed that we're taking is basically from the center line of the berm over. So you know, we're taking a sixteen foot swath of watershed into that swell. And then that swell just evens out into what's existing as sheet flow coming across. So on each side of the property. That will be contained is not to go into the farmer's field.
Uh. That's all I had. I know the ECB made comments that they appreciate all native plantings.
Great.
Had a comment on. I forget. Where's the? Procythias. I have my my house to keep.
It's it's not, it's not a native, you know, um, but it's it's also not an invasive. And what's nice is because it is so woody. And it's a plant that'll get twelve to fifteen feet tall. Um, now invasive being it doesn't jump. It'll suffer and colonize into its own colonies. And the idea is that that really creates that screening effect. You know, it also will compete with things that will come in that are invasive that are gonna come out of other hedgerows. So let's take buckthorn. Buckthorn you see in every hedgerow all up and down. Terrible, terrible invasive. So if we can keep plants that will compete against the really heavy invasives, even though that they're not, you know, a true native. The idea is we can manage these and these are what I wanna call a manicure. It's a simulated hedgerow. But it's a manicure and we're trying to keep the really bad stuff out. It's easy for that to get in because there's a lot of burbs. And they eat those berries and they go and they, you know, go all over the bathroom. But if you get plants that will compete against those, we can keep that down. And keep it as sort of these these colonies of plants. And then there's competing colony plants with that. So you take like staghorn chumac. Which is a very rhizomeus plant and that's gonna run and that's around the forsythia and that sort of blocks it, says, hey, don't come this way. This is our space. So you get these plants. Believe it or not, they kind of talk to each other through chemicals in the ground. And that's the idea of creating these colonies for these hedgerows.
So, yeah, these these are the other parts of this, the carport. The spa, all that stuff is already been started, right?
That is correct. From my being out there on the site, the spas and carport has been started. The bunker for the equipment spas and um, that bunker will, again. When I came on board and I I got on board a little late, I wasn't here with the original architects. Were able to hit that um, eighty pound load capacity on that. And get that green roof where it's gonna be those native grasses because we'll have their, our depths of soil profile that we can't get with the carport.
Thank you. Board, anything?
That's fabulous.
I think you mentioned it last time or somebody did that your site distance is not changed at all at the point of driveway.
No.
It's not changed at all. Just wanna make that note. Good. And yeah, I think that's all the persons I had. Nothing else? We'll look for it where else.
All right.
Thank you.
Motion to vote.
We have an amended single stage site plan. Okay, so. I'll make a motion for the amended um, single stage site plan for twenty-five zero six three at twenty-six thirty-nine Cooley Road.
All fair?
Hi.
Hi.
Mark.
Mark. Thanks, guys.
Thank you very much.
It's lovely. Now this is the last Cooley one, right?
Listen, I I I hope so. And I I do wanna apologize because honestly, last meeting, I said, Bill. Bill, I think I should do a fully realized plan. And he said, no, we don't need it. And I said, I think the board would like to see it. He goes, no, we don't need it. So then he drew this like rough sketch. I had it forward and called me the next day and I flipped out. I should have went to the board. This is like, and I said, just. Let me draw this thing and we'll bring it to them and I'm sure we're gonna be okay. So I apologize. Brought this out in extra meeting.
It's definitely one of one of many. This is not a house I've ever seen around here.
I know, but you guys like it when people do their due diligence and make it a little bit more simple and I'm sure you get tired of seeing the same people all the time.
No, not at all.
Same beat, the dead horse. It's kind of like, God.
Nope. Anyway, thank you. Yeah, motion is to continue. Are maybe.
Most of the continue or anything. Um, are you all there? Okay, as soon as I can get there.
Okay, so the next up is Brickyard and Thomas Road. Those, there's four houses altogether. Uh, we're probably gonna talk about. Thanks. Uh, they're the second or the third, the second, third and the fourth are all exactly the same. If you remember, but the first one has a relocation septic, right? Um, you just talked to that one and the.
Sure, we're talking about this number one. I I think it's two, three.
So it's. Twenty-four oh nine.
It's two, three, five and six. I'm not mistaken.
That versus.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's it's.
So we'll just look at.
We may be talking about the same thing, but.
Yeah, I think that's twenty-four oh nine was the one that had the septic relocation and raised on.
Yeah.
And then the other three, Brickyard, Brickyard and Thomas were all raising up before.
Correct, yep. And I believe one of them's already built and one of them is the foundation's already done. So. I think it was because uh, they found that the water table was really high. And so they decided to raise up the house to get above the water table. And then. By doing that, it actually helped us with the septic systems by removing the pump tanks. So the cost went down and. Um, they didn't have any wet basements, so. The whole good things.
Exactly. So just talk a little bit about the septic room of.
Um, well.
The field.
Unfortunately, I didn't design these. Um, and the person who did left our company. So I'm here to help. Facilitate answering those questions. I may not be able to answer them right now, but um.
I mean, there's, it's just.
I I I know that we have resubmitted to the um, Department of Health and. We haven't had any negative feedback yet. Um. Sorry, I can't come on on that right now. Um. But I can write something up with Brennan and submit it to the. To Eric if you'd like.
Well, one of our comments was whether per testing has been done in the new location. Do you know if that's been done?
Yes, yep, it has. Within the past two weeks, I believe.
So it hasn't been approved in that.
What's that?
Has it not been approved in that area?
Well, on the site plans, it shows that the test bits in the old location, but not in the new proposed location. So we we just want to see, you know.
Yeah, I don't, I'm I'm not. Sure that the the plans have been updated with the new perk and deep hole tests. Um, that's something that we will absolutely provide.
That part of your conditions.
All the conditions on each of these ones are that like satisfaction of the comments on another standard mission. Um, most of these are probably easier than.
Right.
So that, what I just mentioned, the front test of the notes, that's a condition.
Yeah. Board, any questions? Pretty easy, really, all. Um. Let me just review your. Condition.
Just all years of each other?
Number five.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Perfect. More of the thoughts?
Questions?
No, the questions.
No questions. We're gonna be using, did you leave?
No, we're gonna do these all together.
We are.
I think.
That's great.
All together, all state. And they're all the conditions are all the same.
They're all CPN twenty-five oh six three?
No.
They're. They go. Uh, seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight. I'll I'll dive in.
Okay.
I'll I'll make a. Four motions here. Um, so combining twenty-five zero seven five, twenty-five zero seven six, twenty-five zero seven seven, twenty-five zero seven eight. That's first three at Brickyard, the fourth at Thomas Road. So I'll make a motion for. The, these are single stage site plans.
amended.
amended. Thank you. amended same stage site plans. With the five conditions, I did not hear any additional conditions as we talk with the five. As written. Or Mr. Cooper.
They're all based on. I'll second that.
Okay.
Covered all of.
Tim with the second. Any discussion?
Nope.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thanks, guys.
Nice, nice. Next up is thirty-four fifty-four Sandy Cove.
Good evening, everyone. Are you able to hear me just fine?
Yes.
Yes.
Very perfect. Um. Good evening. My name is Tony Tentera. I'm senior project manager with Mohar Engineering for the. Smith Deck Edition project at three, four, five, four Sandy Cove. And attendance tonight should be Carl Smith, the project applicant. Um, at this time, I just wanna give a brief description regarding the project site. The project's review uh, process so far with a ton of other agencies and then. Turn the discussion over to the board for any comments or concerns you may have. So the lot in question uh, at three, four, five, four, it's bisected by private drive right of ways centrally running. North, south across the lot, Sandy Beach Drive, as well as along the northern property line, Poplar Beach Road. The site is zoned RLD and it's on the order of about twenty-five thousand square feet overall. Uh, what the applicant is proposing is the reconstruction in largely the same footprint of an existing deck with a new hot tub. In an expansion of the footprint to accommodate that new hot tub function. Uh, additionally, uh, there are some adjustments to the surrounding landscape and that are proposed. Uh, previously on the project, the ECB and I believe other reviewers. Uh, provided through their reviews, concerns about the removal of an existing maple tree. Um, as it relates to the shoreline development guidelines and just the protection of the existing resource. And uh. Ultimately, we uh. Pursued some adjustments to the plans, uh, tweaking the uh, corner of the deck to look to best protect that existing maple whereby. We give it the best chance of survival. Additionally, there's landscaping, um, through the landscaping plan that's shown uh, that was developed by Dan Hackett uh, and shown on the net you drawn. Uh, for the project, originally we were pursuing variances for building and lot coverage, which both of which were pre-existing non-conforming from the existing conditions. Um, the proposed variances would have been on the order of a hundred and twenty-five square feet. Uh, that being said, following feedback from the ECB and other agencies and members of uh, town. Uh, we look to eliminate the need for the lot coverage variance uh, through the use of a permeable driveway product, namely gravel pave two. Uh, which we show now on our plans by the uh, existing driveway turnaround. Um, in about that hundred twenty-five square foot quantity. Uh, ultimately, uh, in eliminating the lot coverage variance, uh, we just need the building coverage variance and that was granted at the town's. So in a board appeals meeting last month. Other than that, the project site was flagged on the short YAF through shippo. Uh, given that the site was previously disturbed, um, we anticipated the no effect finding from shippo. It was received and uploaded to cloud permit. Uh, additionally, there is the construction in the special flood hazard area of Cannon Dago Lake, um, which frankly lies over the entire. Entirety of the uh, lot region. Um, and as such, we pursued a D C jurisdictional determination. Uh, given the ninety day timeline and how it would hold up. Uh, construction following approvals uh, and all that. Um, our current ninety day timeline slated to end around the end of this month, uh, August thirty-first. Um, we're, given how we received a response recently for another project, we're expecting it. That D E C likely will um, use most of that ninety day timeline, but we're expecting. Uh, their jurisdictional determination probably about a week beforehand. Lastly, uh, just wanna bring up that. Seeking approval, well, obviously we're seeking approval from the planning board tonight, and then after which we'll be looking to submit our draft floodplain development permit. Uh, and complete other permit workspaces and cloud permit as needed. And of course, the D E C's jurisdictional termination would be forthcoming to. Uh, give over to the town. So at this time, I'd like to. Turn over the discussion to the town's planning board members. If you have any questions or concerns for. Me uh, related to the engineering for the project or what's being proposed. Uh, or uh, more specifically, uh, questions directed. Uh, or uh more specifically, uh, questions directed to the project applicant Carl.
Thank you. I just have one. Carl can answer it or you could answer it. On your site plan. It says the tulip tree was only gonna be planted if the maple fails. Would you, can you at least plant the tulip just in case? Cause if you wait, I mean, that's gonna be years down the road. Cause it says if it fails, it's gonna be planted. I'm just wondering why you put it in your plan and then.
I had I had that same question. Uh, the tool tree obviously was put in there when we had the intent to take the tree down. And since it was already on the plan, we had the discussion back and forth and that as to whether we should leave it on there. Uh, Tony had suggested based on his previous experience that maybe that's a good idea. I'm of the mindset that they're. You know, I would prefer not to, cause part of it is wanting to have the view. And that's how it ends up maybe still on the on the plan.
So what?
I mean, uh, uh, as far as I know, you're the only ones that have actually been to the property. And there, as you know, it's pretty well landscaped already.
Yeah, that's why I asked the question, cause I gotta ask here.
And we're adding some some reasonable around the deck.
Yeah, if for sure, like shoreline guidelines. Um, I had just had your picture up too. It was pretty crowded back there. There's a lot of stuff going on back there.
Right.
Um, so. I could see leaving that off if that maple tree survives, uh, which hopefully it will. It's a nice tree. No, I I just wanted to bring that up. Uh, we have to. Think about the shoreline guidelines, and I think you have a lot of shrubbery that you're gonna move around anyways, close to that tree. Or close to the deck. Comment that. Uh, in the construction, I'd see it's just gonna be, maybe Anthony can answer it. It's just gonna be pilings down into the ground or.
Correct.
Yep. A little bit of disturbance. And. I remember I didn't read any neighbor complaints or anything like that in the negative. Uh, your one neighbor said, I don't have a problem. That we talked every time, right? So, yeah.
Is he the only one who would be able to see it anyway?
I remember clearly you had more planning upfront too.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's pretty dense in there.
Yeah.
Um, I'm not overly concerned about the tulip tree until. Until a failure happens because it's, I think, with the lighting that actually gets in there, it'll still struggle too. Get what it needs to be successful in the meantime. I get to sneak in, cause I've walked by almost.
Okay.
So it's written on the plan and just I wanna make sure that we're all, it's written in the plan. In the event that the maple fails, then the tulip goes in. It's not a keep maple, keep tulip at at the start.
I like it that way.
Otherwise, it's just.
Hopefully, you know, maple will last another fifty.
Yeah, something, somebody else will deal with.
It's actually a young maple, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. As maples grow. So that's all my questions I had.
The adjustments.
It's quite an education.
Uh, I just wanna verify, I mean, I have to ask that all these plantings are natives that are on the list here?
Well, Mr. Hackett, who just left, could I? But he said, yes, the the only ones that aren't native of the existing ones, the uh rows of.
Carrows.
Sharon, which are already there.
But there's a really good reason that Dan came up with why there's that still at the there. Yeah. They really protect the base of the native species.
They look like they are. Thanks.
And the native likes them.
I was pretty impressed with that.
Yeah. I'll make the motion that we bundle seeker resolution type two on C P N twenty-five dash zero sixty-five. As well as the single-stage site plan for C P N twenty-five dash zero sixty-five, thirty-four fifty-four Sandy Cove. Taking the name for the discussion?
No.
No, all in favor? Thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Next up. German brother. Peter here? Peter is online. Peter, you're muted.
Yes, I am here. Since I was uh next in line, now I thought there were some people ahead of me.
You're up, you're up.
Okay. So, um. I'd like to, um, using that picture as a guide, um. Well, you can see there from the drawing, uh, add in addition, the exact same size as the existing building. To cover the, what we call the yard. Um, there would be uh enough room for where the boats are currently worked on today. Six boats, three in each direction. Um, there would be uh three overhead doors on the north and on the south side. It would be the existing, match the existing structure. Um, in all dimensions and look and feel.
Peter, were you, are you talking about a solid, a brand-new, three-sided roofed building or an on?
Full building.
But it would be as an addition to the existing structure that's there.
Correct.
Are you taking the wall, are you taking the west wall of the existing building out or are you leaving it there?
Um, uh, it would be a combination. Um, there'd be some will all still left, I guess, but mostly removed.
So there wouldn't be an east wall of the new building?
Correct.
Peter, I think, I think originally when uh we started the conversation about County Road ten and this property. That part of the plan was to move this work up to County Road ten. Is that the, is that still part of the plan or is this in lieu of that plan?
In lieu of.
Does that eliminate the future uses of the County Road ten property for you?
Um, County Road ten, forgive my ignorance, is.
North Road. North Road, sorry, North Road, sorry, Peter.
Cause we do have some storage at the fairgrounds on ten.
No, no, I'm my my mistake, uh, but the north end of town on North Road, uh. Where where you're doing the storage now. I know originally the, there's conversation about moving. A lot of the mechanical work and things up to that location as well as the uh, the storage that's happening here now. Does that eliminate North Road?
Yes.
Okay. Peter, when I looked at that, um, I, a few concerns I had was that slope that's on the north side, how that. How you'd handle that drainage from your roof? And the third would be site, uh, if there's any site blockage of the traffic. There's already a tight there with all your parking there. So those are the concerns I have there, um. How you'd handle the water runoff, the slope that you have already there to the north.
So that would tie into um the existing gutters that are on the existing building?
So I believe those gutters go right into the lake, right?
Yes.
So our goal is to mitigate that water at least a little bit before it goes in in the future, so. Uh, just to just thought process there. Yeah. Peter, would this eliminate any of the storage units that go along the side of the road now?
Um, really, nothing changes other than it covers my guys that work. Um, none of the workflow or storage or parking or anything changes. It just covers the guys that can work. There, they're obviously working in the sun and the rain.
Sure. And I, I know you've been, I mean, you've had different ideas of this, this property is, is this. Yeah, I guess what I'm, what I'm curious about is what happens with the longer-term, more of a comprehensive plan with the subject property as a whole. Uh, so. In general, I have an aversion to expansion of pre-existing non-conformities. Um, and that, that's nothing to do with this project or any project. You'll hear me say that in almost every pre-existing non-conformity is that. We should closely look at it and potentially not do it. Um, so that's where it would be helpful to understand with the bigger picture. And the thoughts around what you're hoping to do here, cause there's obviously the, there's still the land across the street that could allow. For potential expansion, things along those lines. Um, have you given any thought to any of that?
Um, I, if I touch across the street, you're gonna make me put in a million-dollar drainage facility. So it's impossible to touch that.
I, um, Mark, I will just note that I agree with you. And I was similarly wanting to ask similar questions around kind of, um. Long-term plans, overall scope of the whole property. And um, I agree in that expanding and already pre-existing non-conformity is. Something that. I would not recommend as well, and that's just my. I'm just echoing what you said really, but just for the notes.
So Peters, Tim Schaire, what, what, how am I gonna use the existing building if you build this building? Because the access to that building is from the west side. Where are you gonna put the new building?
So the inside of that, um, I'm sorry, the parts trailer, which. Um, is just to the south of the existing building.
Yeah.
That white rectangle, um, that would go inside. We're outgrowing that parts trailer, so that would go inside that building. Um, that would be the um, the bulk of what happens in there.
Okay.
So right now, there, like, you said that the, you access that building from that, those two doors on the west side. Boats wouldn't go in that building anymore.
Okay.
Peter, did you look at just extending to the south?
Um. I did, um. It's, it's, it's very hard for me to get boats into the building. In that, uh, so I have to clear that yard in order to back a boat in the building.
Does it change any of the workflow that happens there now? So I mean, li- right now with the yard, it has the, I know the crew ends up having to cross the road quite a bit to back boats in. Uh, will the new space impact how any of that flow works? How is it gonna increase? Traffic on the road? Is it gonna decrease traffic on the road? Does it not change?
Not change. Yep. All it does is provide coverage for the guys. That's the only change. Actually, I was listening to a report today about, um. Getting uh employees out of the heat and how that's becoming a larger and larger uh issue. And this would allow that.
Peter, gonna ask, did you look at just a temporary awning or anything to cover them?
Um, I have tried lots of things. Um, I can't get anything to uh span that forty-foot distance there. That would hold up. I've tried tarps of various weights. Um, if they're too light, they, the wind just blows them. If they're too heavy, they pull down whatever I put across there. So I have been unsuccessful in multiple attempts at that.
Okay, thank you. Yes, it's hard to also vision this. Is there any chance you could have a, a little bit better architectural? Picture of what this could look like?
Sure, I just didn't wanna spend too much money if it's not gonna go far, so.
Sure.
Um.
Well, I think that, I think that extending the building and considering that the road that's the inside of curve. You're gonna impact your, your site distance from what currently is, was there.
I'd have to look at that because that building. It's, or I'm sorry, that, yeah, the existing building sits down quite a bit from the road, so, um. I, I, again, I have to, I didn't consider that, but, um, by the time there's cars on the road. On the roadside, my guess is that the rooftop will be below a car parked on the road. Meaning that it wouldn't affect sightline any more than a car parked in the road.
In general, I'm agreeing with both of you. Not encouraging standing all in already.
Peter, anything else to add?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Well, what we'll do is put together our notes and put together airport to the zone.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Peter.
Thank you.
Thanks. So you have specific notes if you could just send them and I'll put it together, so forward to that. I'll do my best to write that letter as good as Chuck can do. The high bar.
And it can be. The same to two.
Yeah. Alright, Anthony, you are up.
Yep.
Thirty-five, forty-two Sandy Beach Drive. Go.
Okay, so actually, a few years back, he did a tear-down rebuild, um, the original house. Um, when he did the tear-down rebuild, the original plan had a, a lakefront patio. It was ground level. And then he changed that from a patio to a deck, and then he did another deck. When he did those, he did some expansions on that and he's kinda left with this non-conforming that he is now. So the plan is in place is to take the deck that's there now and take the deck out. And bring the house, it's basically expand the house toward the lake in that same footprint. The caveat with that, just on the south side, there's a strip that's gonna have some stairs in it for second floor access, cause it's a two-floor addition. Um, and that's what, where we come in with the non-conformities. I did do a couple of calculations. It was brought to me about the fifty percent rule. He's at thirty-six, seven on the lakeside, so he's well under the fifty percent bissection for the right of way. Um, I mean, that's pretty much it. I did upload a, a landscape plan today or yesterday. Um, it should be an updated site plan package or just the landscape plan.
Is it in the site plan application?
Yes, probably in the site plan application.
Oh.
But like I said, the goal is to take the existing debt that's there now, tear it out, and put the house front of it, put a, bring the house out. Um, they're just, after being there for a few years, they're kinda realizing, you know, where people wanna be and how things work and. You know, where people want to be and how things work and the, um. They realize that they want, they need a little bit more interior space. And that's what's pushing this. So there's no patios or anything, it's just gonna be. Um. The house, and then they also have the, the, the dock that's there that they can use for outdoor area. Um, he did do over the years between when he built it, when he tore down and rebuilt, he did take a giant chunk of concrete, there was a. Concrete bulkhead almost, at the lakefront, he pulled that out and just had a nice, just the seawall that's left there. And then he's got the walkways going from the road to the house and from the house to put. The dock. So like I said, the only real expansion upon what he's doing now is this section, you know, and that's what variance is kind of really.
Is that where patio is now?
Right now, the patio is like, come just down over here and comes. We're expanding south about a foot or two.
Closing in and expanding south.
Correct.
By.
Yeah. But, yeah, because that's where the variance comes in that we need. Off that south property.
Is it gonna be an improved walk that goes to the staircase that's gonna go up?
It's all internal. So then that staircase internal, so you won't see it, it's just gonna be part of the plan. And there are some, um, architectural sketches, I believe, that were uploaded as well.
Wait, and this is their private home, they don't rent it out?
Private home, don't rent it out, um.
Oh.
Yeah, you kind of see they're expanding it out and then they're flattening the roof out too as well, so. It's a different pitch.
What's the space gonna be used?
Um, I believe it's bedrooms and then extended living room, so. I could get a little more information on that from the architect, exactly how many change spaces it'll be used.
Oh.
And then they're gonna do, we're gonna do some shading from the lake. Also, when you are at the lake and you're looking at this. The one big thing that's in front of you is their boat station too, so they have a, a covered boat hoist. But there's some larger trees on the south, there's a, there's a, a big hedgerow that's there, we're gonna plant a new tree in the southwest and then do some, some. Ground shading along the new addition to kind of help buffer it. As much as we can.
Okay, one. Not an issue, but you know what I'm gonna ask you? Probably this water goes into the drainage pipe that goes right to the lake.
Yeah, when he did the turnout rebuild, because of how they did it and they reduced coverage when they were, they were trying to hit it, they. I mean, I don't know, I, I wasn't, I didn't do the original, but I believe that they. By designing the way they did, they got, they didn't do any stormwater, so it just goes in, there's no infiltration.
Looks like you're gonna tap into that.
Yeah.
I, I would prefer to have like, you know, some kind of infiltration before it gets to the lake. Like we always do out there.
Yeah, I mean, I could propose a dry well. I mean, it's gonna pay wet most of the time just because of elevation wise, but you know what I mean at all.
You've done French drains out there. Something. Uh. That we should have standard out there.
Yeah, I can look at doing something that would, um. Kind of incorporate the, the new section. At least take care of that new water.
Yeah.
So. Just a general observation that I go through there all the time.
Hmm.
Um, when they did this, they, they expanded their. Surface covered for areas like that at driveway, so I know there are a number of water issues.
They did and then they removed it.
Yeah.
So, and that was part of. I remember doing, because those days built, and so that was doing something where the zoning code, the officer at the time gave him some direction.
I see.
He didn't get that direction ready, and he did what he thought he could do, and then it was told to tear it out because the neighbor complained, so.
I'm gonna say it still creates a lot of excitement with the neighborhood, so if anything that's impacting water flow through there, yeah, same comment relating to pre-existing non-conformity.
No, I understand. We were not really messing with the water bullets on that side because we're, you know, close to the lake, so nothing on that side of the house to change. We're not redoing any water services or adding any party or anything, that everything, you know? East of the west side of the house now is gonna stay exactly the same, minus, you know, some. Construction movement in and out of the lot.
Yeah, when I pulled up on that, I was like, we're gonna follow, why is he changing?
Like I said, just being. Just being, using it, they've realized that their family needs for the, they're, they're changing, so.
That's probably what creates some of their neighbors.
Good, good.
A lot of people.
I know.
A lot of people, a lot of cars.
Yeah.
It is a dead end of Sandy Beach, so. Takes a while to get through there.
Oh, they took the chain down, it wouldn't be a dead end.
The neighbor likes.
That's like, and that's actually something that they, uh. This project came up anec- anecdotally in the neighborhood the other day because of that, um, emergency vehicle access.
Hmm.
As it's, and I, I don't know, I looked at it, it looks like it is separate properties, so I don't know whose chain that is.
Believe it's the neighbor's chain.
Is it?
I think so.
He talks about it like it's not, but.
I mean, it's not a very significant change. If I was driving an emergency vehicle, I would just go through it.
You're gonna. I think they're gonna be looking at access.
Yeah.
Because then they turn it into parking.
Yeah, that would have to be between, you know, the neighbors.
Yeah, see, this, this is a tough one, because there's not a, there's not a way to read. Well, there's always a way, but in the current design, there's not an easy way to read, to get more infiltration, I think, looking at. Because that's, that's what I think too, is how do we? How do we do something with water?
Yep.
And there's not. And there's really not options.
It is, I mean, we could do some sort of. Dry well or some shallow infiltration area, but, you know, because of, it is an elevated house, now we are low. I mean, you could just tell there, we're two or three feet above grade and. During a high spring event. Most of that infiltration's gonna be, you know, it's just the challenge we have. You know, low-level lakefront is doing some infiltration that, you know.
Sandy Beach.
During a high spring and events. They really do anything other than just. Hold the lake water in, as the lake water goes down, they hold the water and overflows and you're just.
There was, when that was still gravel, where they paved it, that actually would, would capture some of them.
Yeah.
That's what. It's paved now. Uh, there's nothing, nothing new on here. Oh, you can take it out of the surface. Yeah, that's right.
Well, there's just a kind of like Sandy Beach kind of, the road itself is low and it doesn't allow.
Well, as they build the houses, get higher and higher.
They're still.
One being built up there a little bit.
Yeah, that's the chase project.
Okay, anything else? Again, this is another one, we'll write a letter to the zone, and give us our thoughts on that. Um. I do, I was kind of concerned on the second story, they're gonna make it in your B and B or exchange.
Yeah, there is no, no, this is a family home, so there's no B and B.
Is there a reason that that can't get, get inside of the? And we need to do the expansion on a, on a performance.
I mean, they've gone through it, Jay Harris, uh, um, Hanlon has gone through it a couple of times, I can bring it up again.
It's easier, yes, if we don't expand for that.
I understand that.
Or reduce the.
I've been trying.
If there's a way to reduce.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Something.
I, I will definitely run it by the team again to this.
An example of something that turned out very positively, and it's a, it's a shame that this isn't as negative, but the gentleman, the deck. Um, if he had applied to do that, when they were tearing the garage down, it would've been easy because we're turning it to grass, but he's still then added a hundred and twenty-five square feet of. Even though we don't technically allow. Unpermeable surfaces as a surface because of maintenance. There's something, I mean, suggestions like that.
Well, the permeable surface did come up in a meeting the other day, and it's apparently it's proved.
No, no, we allow them, they're allowed, but they have to come with a.
Yeah, I understand.
So, yeah. As long as you don't seal over it.
Yeah, it's not asphalt, it has to be permeable like paper, so that's why they don't like asphalt.
Is that official now? That, that doesn't count in square footage?
No.
That's what like, what they were saying.
We had a meeting, we had a PRC meeting a couple of weeks ago, and it's not, if it's deemed. A permeable system, not asphalt. That is no longer considered lockover. Well, it's not considered, not no longer.
That's new information.
Mm-hmm.
And, and how about boulders? Are boulders considered, considered structural? My escape boulders, they're, they're. I can tell you in two thousand and fourteen, they weren't.
No, no, there's still, landscape boulders are still considered structural, I do know that.
I wasn't aware of the.
People knew like, structure definition came till fifteen.
All right, my, I, yeah, that's true, because I was, I was twenty fifteen to twenty sixteen.
Yeah, we just ran into that with Reinhardt, the variance first.
But you know my boulder, my boulders, there were two.
Yeah.
And they got all excited because they said they were structured.
Yeah.
Like, that's to keep a car from falling off the drive.
Well, you need structure. So, but.
Well, that's, actually, could we get clarification on? Coverage? That, that's actually important, that we understand that.
Uh.
Not for this project, for any.
He's listening.
Mister Murphy, Murph.
Yep, I'm on.
Coverage and, uh. And other forms of surfaces, they don't, it doesn't count anymore?
So when we're looking at it, if it is a permeable product. That is greater than or equal to. What a undisturbed ground would be, and they're able to document that. Then it technically does not classify itself as lock coverage per the code and how it's written. The key point with that, though, is, like you guys said, we do require the maintenance to be listed out very, very, very strictly. Um, to the point where we've even gone as far as recommending it be placed within the deed itself at the county.
Interesting. How is a? How is anything? Better than an undisturbed surface?
So you would actually be surprised, uh, the last project that you guys looked at, uh. Forgive me, it was Sandy Cove, I think it was. Um, when we talked about it with their design team, their product actually does have a storage component to it. Um, and the pavers themselves, the material for which they're made out of, has a greater infiltration rate than undisturbed soil.
Okay. Is that a, is that a state law change, or is that a town law change on that?
No, so that's actually within our code as far as what is impermeable versus permeable. And how it plays into it.
So I asked you to email me that section of code?
Yeah, that's no problem.
Appreciate it. Good news, I love that idea.
Yeah, I mean, the code, some of the code for some runoff on some of those products are lower than grass, so, yeah, the, it's the storage component, things of that nature, and it's. Mu- mu- many times it's not worth it, because it's just. I mean, you're talking.
I'm thinking those.
Seventy to eighty dollars a square foot to install it.
Well, some of those, like the structural project, then, the product that you then plant grass in. They do storage as well.
Do you, they do great if you don't use them. If you're on them all the time.
Using it for secondary.
If it's secondary overflow. But if you're using it every day.
Yeah.
The grass never grows and turns into mud during the spring. I mean, we use them for secondary, but I never really want to use it for driveway, because. After a while, it's just gonna gravel. So, other than that.
Good to know, Anthony.
Thank you very much.
You might not have any more on here, probably.
Yeah.
Yes.
Trying to stand.
I'm not old. That's not. I'm not as outdoors ever.
So, that's the end of the meeting, basically, for approval of the meeting notes.
Oh, yeah. Amanda's moved.
Yeah.
Please. Amanda's moved, meeting minutes.
So low.
And a second. All approved?
I.
Uh. Um, we do have a letter of surety to release, has everybody read that?
Yeah.
Understand it?
Yeah. Anything to update on progress with R G N E?
You got a town supervisor who's working very hard, hang on, let me. I got an update. You got an email. And a, a few days ago.
I'm assuming that as soon as it's turned back on, that the surety you had had to then come back.
Yeah, they'll come back.
I'm back.
Um, I mean. Ideally, they don't have to renew approvals. Um, but if they do, I mean, it is what it is, it's.
We don't use those words.
Renew approvals?
No, it is, with that statement, it is a statement.
Uh, so, okay, at the end of July. Uh, our town supervisor, Mister Simpson, has had several meetings with R G N E and the Public Service Commission. Uh. They're looking for money to build, uh, upgrades that are. Financially imfeasible. The cost range is eight point eight zero five million to twenty-five point three one four million.
Wow.
With the initial number being set at fourteen point three oh seven million. Our gas is the cost will come in in total for twen- around twenty million, pretty much just for the expansion to Uptown. Um, that includes rebuilding transmission lines, replacing switches, replacing two miles of distribution lines. And it would take about thirty-four months. Uh. They're pushing the Public Service Commission to support R G N E's rate case to increase rates to cover these costs. Applying for grants. Who and everything they can think of.
So we don't have the infrastructure in the towns for four hundred homes.
Well, hang on. Yes, but they don't, I don't want, that comes out sounding like the town hasn't provided infrastructure.
No, I don't.
Purely an R D and E.
Yeah, no, to me, it's R D and E.
Uh. I don't know how this has happened, it's happened in a lot of areas, it's an R G N E. Uh, it's plaguing R G N E throughout many communities, candidate was not unique.
But it's just, it creates an interesting conflict for us, because we've got a. In our.
We want all of our homes to be built.
There.
Where this, where we don't have electricity.
In our camp plan.
Where R G N E can't, won't provide electricity.
But in our camp plan in general, creates a huge conflict with our camp plan.
That's what you mean, yeah, which is why our supervisor is working so hard to. Solve this problem.
Is it just that? The area, or is it, like, if it was in another location in the town, would R G N E be like, okay, that's fine, no problem?
It's just that area, and I don't know the boundaries of that area. I mean. Up towards Farmington, I think, I'm just sort of. Estimating it.
Yeah.
The power comes from a different direction, from different transmit, uh, substations. Um. And you know, and they've got geographical ranges. I actually was in a meeting with the guy who decides which. Where they pull the power from, uh, on another matter. And he said, oh, no, please tell me it's not Seventeenth, because he knew Seventeenth was light, and they look, they pulled out a map and.
Oh.
He said, oh, no, we can get it from here. So there, I mean, it's not like R G D's, people at R G N E are trying. Um, they've just got integrated equipment that just costs too much money to replace.
Okay.
So rather than leave one point seven, one point eight million dollars tied up in a letter of credit. Uptown Landing would like the letter released and they can post repost if and when, uh. They get power. It's basically a substation, I think, is what this says. They'll need to help. Yeah. So, you know, motion of release.
I need a motion, wanna look at it?
I've read it.
Yeah.
It's just, it's the entire letter.
Yeah.
So, so move.
I'll sign.
Alter.
Sorry.
I. I get to sign in if this.
No, don't.
Somebody else. Okay, next, I think, uh, Mark, you're up next.
Just a quick topic, and I'll invite Kim participating. We started a dialogue about. Um, training opportunities. I keep pushing for more knowledge around stormwater and all that kind of fun stuff. Kim's listening to that silently, she does hear China, and said that there may be an opportunity to do some of that. In twenty-six, is what your thought, thought process is, you wanna talk, talk through a little bit?
Sure, um, a couple of years back, we had like a, a day training thing here at the town. There was a number of different groups on different topics, and it would be nice to. Maybe plan something for twenty-six along that line, and it could be on board.
For example. So, I mean, we, we got into the, kind of like dialogue going back and forth about. What we've been talking about stormwater runoff, just general issues that we're experiencing. For me, it would be about the things that we're experiencing around protecting. Uh, the areas around the lake. But to build into that, what Kim's looking for and what we were talking about is looking for support to do that. Uh, you mentioned E C B is supporting it?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, so then it would turn to, if we decide that we want to do it, then we look, we'd have to look at helping you set the agenda and get. Engage people that want to do it. It may come into some of the other planning things that we've talked about as well, maybe. If it, I wanted to be used, so I'm not trying to create more work for, certainly Sarah or anybody. On that, but in some of the things that we've talked about, complaining with that in the past. Also means that we probably have to ask the town for the town board. For participation in budget at some point.
Do you want staff to set some?
Um, I think. Val, I'm happy if it's, we need.
Can we suggest it? Under judgment to them?
I think that would be great, then whoever's happy to participate in it, so I know that that's something, stormwater is particularly a topic that. You're passionate around. Um, and you've got knowledge around. And then you could probably suggest a program or build a program on it. So I don't know that it has to be just staff. It's looking at it, kind of aligning our, the things that we want to do collectively. Or individually even, and use it as part of that for part of the agenda. Or individually even, and use it as part of that for part of the agenda. And, so I'm not saying it has to be town. Staff that does it, they'll end up helping with it because we need access to the facility.
Cause they need sort of a point person from staff.
Yeah, we need to keep ourselves out of trouble with it. And then there's even the suggestion of, um, potentially bringing in vendors and things along those lines that could also participate in that. Uh, so it might, I mean, might, could in theory be cost neutral, but. The folks at the end of the table would probably be motivated around participating in that.
I'm sure it was, and I remember years ago when we played on, with the budget was a lot of like, booing covering stuff.
We've done it twice, um. And when we invited people to speak, it was. Like pro bono, like we're not gonna pay anyone, you can come. But you have to do it for free, and there was a lot, I need a lot of them, so.
There's even so that startup that I introduced, uh, as a, Kim reminded me of this too, with the, um, the waterfall that he started coming. And the number of entities that are out there that we could then bring them into, they can pitch and talk at the same time, right? So tell them that we want them to be, it's a useful conversation, so they're not gonna just sell things.
Yeah, telling what, telling what they've got is their pitch, there's stuff out there that nobody knows about.
And there's just great organizations around that are happy to hear and free, like, yeah, they're nice on water, right?
Educational aspects around the agri-sol, for example. For that project, I had not heard a lot about that, I mean, that's intriguing, I'd love to learn. All of them come together.
I'd like to do a more site survey on that or site visit almost.
Just trying to tell them.
Yeah.
So.
So I'm, I'm happy to participate. I'm not paying to do it though, so M R B will pay my vendor.
That means that you've got contributions that are coming in directly.
M R B, oh, M R B will pay my vendor, have a good evening, everybody.
I know some, I know in our middle.
Getting a bunch of vendors, so I think we need to be able to find success.
Yeah, I think that's right.
What we want is planning board, you know, because everybody's got a new product after.
Yeah, I think that's true, I don't, I don't think we would restrict who comes, but we could outline the, the parameters of what makes sense to show up.
Yeah.
You're not gonna, I, I mean, just, I don't know.
Oh, you didn't say.
I don't know what you would want to restrict, but. I, I don't disagree with restricting that, but if we're talking about, we're talking about tables and. And it makes sense, so, well, people are gonna come in and talk about chairs, that might not make sense for, so they come and talk about. You know, saying, I don't know, it should be relevant.
I'm getting, I'll pull the happy theme, you know, but like, same time, it might. Depending on who your audience is, you might know some people who maybe aren't interested in whatever that theme would be.
And, well, that's, that's why I'm thinking through, we talked about, E C B, we know their focus, most of the time. Um, I keep hitting, nah, they're, they're actually super consistent. Um, I keep hitting Sarah and Murph with. Different ideas that don't stray too far from my theme, but I'm always looking for ways to touch those, most of those turn into, how can we simplify this process? So I would look at learning about, um, even getting into, when we start talking about stormwater. I guess I shouldn't be realizing that our coverage rules changed. That how do we, how do we focus on that and then what are the good products, those are the type of vendors that I would look at. So there's gonna be something, for me, I'm biased by saying it should be a planning theme, E C B's probably biased by saying it should be an environmental theme. I, I don't know.
Is the audience meant to be town board members, just general cross planning?
Open it up in educated community as well.
Hmm, okay, you're talking about like a community event, okay.
I think so.
I was thinking.
Cause if you're, if you're gonna ask.
Board members.
If you're looking for. Vendor participants.
Got it.
Then, or you could even do a couple of.
Festival sort of thing, not like a festival.
Talks could be for board member.
What we did before, it, it was used as a training opportunity for board members, we opened it up to neighboring. Um, municipalities and they came and they could get their training hours. One thing I don't think staff and potential town board would like is if this is a place where people come to sell their product, another product, I don't think that's a good idea.
Yeah, okay.
But.
I was just thinking, I bring them, so.
For instance, fun, tonight was the first time I heard a profession from that side talk about groundwater. Wait, in, 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 in the application of dry. So. I've heard, since I've been, well, we'll put a dry well. Well, just like a septic system, if the soil doesn't perp, the dry well doesn't matter.
That's why, that's why I like the French drain, that's engineers.
It's, it's still about the.
Glove doesn't fit, no.
If you can't get, first of all, if. If the groundwater is high enough, there's nowhere for the water to infiltrate. Number one, number two, if you can't get the surface water to the French drain because the ground's froze. So see, this, these are some of the, the things that go into the design of these types of structures. So, they're all good, they will benefit. But they do need to be designed to function.
And that's what Murph's talking about, maintenance plans, cause it's not just design, it's the period.
So, you know, we can, we can continue the discussion.
So, yeah, Mike, Mike Murph added a comment that he can speak with us in coalition training as well. Uh, what it sounds like, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't wanna interrupt everyone, but, um, just to interject a little bit, town of Canada was part of the Ontario Wind Stormwater Coalition. And as part of that, I got voluntold to be on the education committee, so I know a little bit, um. We are putting together a full day of stormwater training, let me pull up the actual schedule. Uh, which we have a presenter on permanent erosion control products, uh, we have D E C coming in to teach. Uh, we have the wonderful M R B coming in to teach, uh, we have an instructor with wetlands and the new D E C wetland law. And then we also have Kevin Ovania Colliers coming in for the Suckerbrook watershed study and going over. Their next procedures and process for implementing that, um. I'll forward Sarah off the save the date and she can send it out to everyone, I also sent it to Mark and Kim, um. That's a really good training that we're putting on that. Thankfully, the town will, will pay for everyone, but we get reimbursed for that training from the coalition as being a member, so it ends up being a net zero cost.
See them, there are people that can help.
You know, you know who's uh, coming from D E C?
Yeah, it's Christina, uh, one second, I'm gonna butcher the last name. Chippa, Chiapetita.
Okay, and that's for stormwater or for wetlands?
That is for stormwater.
Oh, okay. I did, I'm.
So these guys are always a step ahead of me, Kim.
More of a week.
That's good. Uh. But it sounds like there's certainly interest in doing more of this as well. And so to answer your question, you had asked the question if the planning board was interested in supporting it, I'm not hearing anything even close to a no. So. Let us know what you need for more help.
Okay. Well, it would be nice if, if people have ideas of such a training, um, you know, people that come and speak or whatever.
Well, mine was just what Murph said. Geez, he made me look bad. No, I'm kidding.
No, that was good. I was good.
Yeah, just, just cross, crossing ideas, that's great.
I think there's other topics that we could certainly get into too and could, could turn a day of it as well, and it's good to know that the town's not motivated around the. Having vendors here, I guess is one way to say.
It's just my thoughts, but I don't think I'm the only one who would have that opinion.
No, that's okay. I, I can see the complications of it, I was actually thinking to just, uh, if we turn it into. Community interaction to try to educate people, then you want to have a larger traction that maybe, I don't know if this is, maybe this isn't the location for that, I don't know. I don't know.
There's other things like, but.
Community, like, cause they get many, those, those guys that come, like, speak to us, so that. Well, so much.
They're all educated on it.
I would really love to get to a point that we could actually get to planning. Cause I think that sounds a little bit flippant. But, so we review the things to the plan, but we don't really do a lot of planning as an organization either. And it would be great to be able to target more of that, in order to do that, we've gotta get these projects to a point where they're. Oh, they're pretty boilerplate now, the town does such a great job for us, they do the obvious. But it'd be nice to standardize some of the other stuff, there's a, that's a, some mark motivation. And then getting you guys going on your special projects would be nice concepts too, so I, I know I keep asking you to standardize how we. Do things, I keep asking you to drive the. Uh, affordable housing aspects and so on and so forth.
Didn't the town just win the award for collecting?
They did.
Yeah, we just, we'd seen, reading that, I was trying to find that.
What, what, we just, we just.
Oh, we're mentioning this pro housing community?
Pro housing.
Yeah, it just means we, we turned in enough data to prove that we've had a minimum amount of growth that the state requires for us to be considered pro housing community. And that step was required in order for us to apply for the ten million dollar grant.
Yeah.
To help Uptown with the infrastructure, got it, which we won't find out till December, I don't think that we've gotten it, but we need to be a pro housing community in order to. Especially we are now.
Awesome.
Um, it just, it just means that we've had enough growth in housing.
And also, this is nothing official yet, but in communicating with, uh, members of the I D A, it sounds like I D A is a. Pretty strong focus on housing aspects now. So, and I, just, just learning more about that, where in the past, I think it had been more about, how do we get more businesses here? I think what I'm hearing is they wanna drive the house, not that this'll slow down on the businesses, but drive the housing aspect. Uh, so the answer, like I keep, every time somebody talks to me about affordable housing, I ask them their definition, it's like. And I get similar responses, so, but I guess we'll get more pressure on finding what that means. But that's all I got, so, we'll support it. Let us know what else you need.
Okay, sounds good.
Anything else from anybody else? Amanda?
Motion in Jerry, seven twenty-two.
Second. Call favor.
Hi.
You talk about.
Done.
And I know I've told a few people.